Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the St. Peter School Board. It is Monday, October 21st, 2024. We are in the St. Peter Governor's Room. It is 6:31 PM. We'll call the meeting to order. First item up is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we need to consider and adopt the agenda, which can be found in the packets and also in the board book.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda is adopted. Next up, consider requests to speak on the agenda. Kimberly?
There are none.
There are none. I approve of consent agenda items. The consent agenda is found in the board book packet and also in the packet in front of us. Would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any items of discussion from the consent agenda?
It's kind of light.
It was kind of light. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. Next up, the best part of the night, student spotlight. We have Mohammed Saleem with us.
Yeah.
Mr. Dory, wow, you're looking good.
Yeah.
You know, Mohammed has, ever since he was in second grade, he, I think he took great pleasure in making sure that he was dressed up more than I was every day.
He did it again.
At least once a week, for sure. He took tie Tuesday to a whole other level, this guy right here. So, it's my pleasure to introduce you to Mohammed Saleem. He's a fourth grader at North. And as you know, we always put a message out to teachers, asking people to recommend student, spotlight students, and he was hands down, second, third, fourth grade teachers all had his name on the list. So that's why he gets the attention for this month because he's definitely deserved it. So Mohammed, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself? And maybe some information about who your teachers were so far to this point in your school career.
Hello, my name is Mohammed. I'm in fourth grade in Mrs. Friedrich's class. And I really like it that we do fun projects. And sometimes I get to help out. I've had Mrs. Friedrich this year, in third grade I had Mrs. Zitter, and when I was in second grade I had Mrs. Walters.
Yeah, now, I talked to all these teachers and they said that, all of them said, you were kind of like a teacher assistant or maybe even a student teacher, right? Like when they have to step out of the classroom for a little bit, they usually put Mohammed in charge. That's, that's kind of what they all said. So what makes you a good leader at North?
Well, like, I guess, like as you said, like I get to like take charge of class when my teachers leave. Also, sometimes when I finish my work and nobody else is finished, I get to like help other students, usually.
So there's some of that student teacher action that you have going on. And then also Mohammed has a position at North this year that's never been a leadership position on student council. You want to tell them about that?
Yeah, I'm student council president.
Yeah, so if you need somebody to fill in that spot right there, he's ready to go. All right, how about, let's talk about academics, like your learning. Like, tell us about some achievements you've attained in your years at North.
Uh, I've been in the spelling bee for the last two years. And, uh, I like to do IXL at home and read at home a lot.
Yeah, so tell us about, so IXL is like a math and language arts practice. And every once in a while I'll put out like a principals' challenge in my weekly video, just, okay, let's, next week we're going to see how, how many types of math problems everybody can hammer out. Like, tell us about that, because in the second grade you seem to have been the leader in the whole building.
Yeah, I usually win like the principal challenges.
But how do you do that? How do you get so many problems done?
Uh, I usually work at home and I work at school hard to like, I find a spot away from other students so I can focus on my work.
Yeah, but then talk about at home, because you, I couldn't believe how much time this guy puts into, he, he takes maybe Saturday or Sunday off once in a while, but Monday through Friday, how many hours are you putting in on reading and IXL?
Two hours.
Like two hours a night? This guy just puts in just under his own decision and maybe some parents encouraging you a little bit too. So, all right, so you're definitely always a force to reckon with, with, with IXL, that's for sure. Um, how about books? We talked a little bit about books. You have a favorite series?
Oh, I like to read a fancy series called The Land of Stories.
And that's your favorite genre, fantasy?
Fantasy.
Very good. All right, so we talked about school a little bit, how about outside of school? Like what do you usually like to do with your time outside when you're not doing your two hours of schoolwork?
Uh, I like to play football and I like to go on walks and ride my bike. And I like to go on, uh, road trips with my family. Sometimes we go shopping in the Mall of America.
Oh yeah, and then how about this one? I like this one.
Uh, I'm also excited to run the school store and play chess during the Passion Project this year.
You want, well, I think we have a match coming up, you and I are here pretty soon. I better practice and I better practice. All right, so very busy, dedicated, well-rounded student. We're all very, very happy for you and we definitely use you as like a model student around the building. So I appreciate your leadership in and around the whole building. So you brought some family members with you. Am I introducing them?
Uh, my sister on the left, her name's Ruwan, and then my other little sister, her name is Mayar. And then my dad, his name is Anwar, and then my mom's name is Mohammed.
All right, congratulations to all of you. All right, we are, we are very, you have a huge bright future in front of you.
Thank you.
And so now we can open it up to the school board. They, they might ask you some questions here, so be ready.
I want to know what you're going to do when you get done with all your schooling.
My, my schooling, like during the summer break?
No, like when you're all grown up, are you going to be a teacher?
No.
No. Okay, I'm not going to say good. What do you think you want to be?
I'm not sure yet, maybe.
Take your time.
Okay.
You've got some time.
Keep the options open.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm thinking from what I heard Mohammed, that you ought to have the Mohammed challenge back to Mr. Dory.
Ooh, oh now.
See if he can actually match you.
Better brush up on my math, too.
Mohammed, do you help your siblings with their homework ever?
Sometimes my little sister, if she needs help.
They probably aren't very receptive to you helping? Or do they let you help sometime?
Yeah, they let me help sometimes.
What, what, um, what age are your siblings? I don't know if I heard that.
Uh, so Ruwan is, um, she's 11 and Mayar is five. And my dad is 15.
I just wanted, I just wanted to know your siblings, but your mom and dad can tell me later. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Mohammed, you are the sharpest dresser.
For sure, for sure.
Just wondering, can I borrow your tie? Now that looks great. And, you know, after you finish school and go on to a career and serve eight years in the White House as president, you think you'd want to come back and be principal at North?
Let's get through that principals' challenge first. Survive that one.
I want you to go on record on who's going to win the chess match.
I think it'll be a battle. It'll be a good one.
You think you can take it?
Yes.
Confidence is not an issue either.
Game on.
Well, congratulations Mohammed. Very proud of you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks Mohammed.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job, Mom and Dad.
That is an impressive young man.
If you could come get my kids to do two hours of homework every night, we'd really be in business.
Awesome. Uh, the next item up is, I don't know what's going to top that tonight, but.
Yeah.
Student council report, we do not have one. Isabel and Emmy are not here tonight because they are at rehearsal for the musical. All right, we will move into our action items portion of the agenda. The first item up is to consider acceptance of gifts, donations, and grants.
There are three items under the gifts, donations, and grants section of the board meeting tonight. The first is a $10,788.72 donation from the St. Peter Booster Club to reimburse the St. Peter Public Schools for purchases the district made on behalf of the Booster Club. Based on conversations with our board treasurer, we determined that it was important to recognize that transfer of funds from the Booster Club to the district on a regular basis. And so you'll see that from time to time throughout the year. The second is a $35,000 donation that was received on behalf of the estate of Frank Fredland and is to be used to support the athletic program at St. Peter High School. Mr. Fredland is a longtime teacher and coach in the St. Peter school system. And Activities Director Ror Cassie is working on finding a way to make the donation a part of something special that Mr. Fredland would be proud of. And the third is the St. Peter Tourism and Visitors Bureau. They've approved a grant in the amount of $1,000 to be put towards the Indigenous Day Walk that was held in October 2024. There's a check that's been presented for $900 and an additional $100 will follow. So I would recommend accepting these gifts, donations, and grants.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Yeah?
So, in the case of, for instance, with the Frank Fredland donation, do we write a formal thank you to whoever is representing the estate and so forth?
We do a formal thank you to all of the gifts, donations, and grants, correct?
I was just going to point that out because that was a nice donation, kind of a significant donation.
Yes.
I'll be, hopefully, Mr. Ror Cassie will come and kind of let us know what eventually comes of that because that was very generous and want to thank their family for that.
Correct.
I didn't have the, by the time I came to St. Peter, Mr. Fredland was done with his glory days at St. Peter High School, but I still heard great stories, so. I know there's some great stories out there, so.
Oh, there are.
I, I wish I would have been able to experience some of them, so.
There are a number of us at the table tonight who had, uh, you know.
Mr. Fredland is a teacher and a coach. And just appreciate those times and appreciate the gift very much.
Mr. Chair? You know, and maybe this is premature, but would the attempt be to spend those proceeds on something that's tangible and utilized or to invest part of it as an endowment for the athletic department?
I don't know if there was a, the only restriction was to use for the athletic, support athletics that Mr. Ror Cassie might have.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The question is, would we, and this is probably premature shape, the decision probably has not been made. I just was wondering if it's something that the, the gift proceeds would be invested in, in something in fairly near term that could be utilized within the programs, various programs? Or if part of it or all of it would be invested as a long-term endowment utilizing earnings off of that to benefit the, the athletic program?
I guess we haven't gotten that far. The only thing that was part of the letter was that he wanted to go to St. Peter Athletics. That was the, um, the one and only stipulation that was part of the donation.
Sure.
And there is more coming. This was just the first part as they continue to finalize his estate. And so, um, you know, we won't probably really start the discussions about what that'll look like until we know what that number will be in the end. But I guess we haven't talked about that, but, um, you know, the, my idea was getting with Dr. Olson and maybe Denny Breen and some of that coached and taught with him for a long time that would know what he might think would be a good way to, to use that money for something more than just, you know, more basketballs and more baseballs and stuff.
Something durable.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And we, like, I think depending upon how this all, uh.
Turns out, then there may be that discussion on, would, would there be a way to invest all or part in, in an endowment and, and use it on an ongoing basis or, um, you know, a number of different ideas I think need to be explored, but.
Right.
That's a good point.
While you're up here Shay, I'd like to thank you for the accounting of the Booster Club expenditures and so forth.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's nice to know that those little notes you put on the bills are followed through.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, so.
All right, any other compliments for Shay while he's up here?
Good looking haircut.
Yeah, I like the haircut.
For the board meet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, so we had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Good questions. Thank you for asking. Any further discussion, discussion, discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We've accepted the gifts and donations. Thank you to the generous donors. Next up, consider approval of a, of the compulsory attendance report. Mr. Dory?
Board Chair Potts, members of the board, in your packet tonight you have two documents and that gives all of us the data for our annual compulsory attendance report. So basically, every year I gather information on students that live in our, reside in our school district and are either homeschooled or prokial private schools within the district and just keep track of the age of each student and get all the schools to supply their student rosters and stuff so that we can basically have an account of all students that reside in our school district and where they're attending if they don't attend St. Peter Public Schools. So the first document is simply a spreadsheet broken down by schools that our students are attending or if they're homeschooled. And then their age and then how many students in each age category with a total under each category that's in the darkened horizontal cell that goes all the way across. And then way on the bottom are tenure totals. So you can see, um, broken down by each of those school years with the current school year at the very bottom. So currently we have 100, 158 students that reside in St. Peter area and are not attending St. Peter Public Schools. And then the other document that's in your packet tonight is a trend line. So it's a graph based on the last 10 years and then a, a line that's inclined up, a line that's going up to the right. And you can see that traditionally the first six, about five or six years of that, we were kind of hovering around 120, around there. COVID is the year that it spiked, 2021, and we had a 188 students. And since that peak right there, we've been slowly, the numbers have been slowly coming down again. So that trend line was pretty steep a couple of years ago and now it's starting to level out a little bit more.
Back into the district?
Correct.
Or is that students graduating at the place they left us?
Um, student, there are a good number of students coming back in the district, yep. Or they, or also, it's a combination of both those variables.
Trend line is hitting in a positive direction.
Correct, yep, definitely. We'd rather see that going down and on the right, but it's certainly not as steep as it was a number of years ago.
Any questions or would entertain a motion to approve?
I'm moved that we accept the compulsory attendance report.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, competing second. Uh, any discussion? Discussion, discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Dory.
Thank you.
Next up, consider approval of a second and final reading of revisions to the policy manual.
There are two policies that are being presented for a second reading. The first is Policy 506, Student Discipline. You can see in the red, the section about other district, uh, school district personnel and the exception for a Minnesota police officer or a school resource officer. And then the second is a, an addition under the crisis management plan relative to an active shooter drill. And when we get to that section, we'll ask John to sort of take us through that again. But, um, any members of the policy review committee that want to add some comments here?
I haven't heard anything from the public on any of these, so.
So John, I think it's worth spending a few minutes going through a, a review again of the change with the active shooter drill.
Yeah, so Policy 806, um, our recommendation is to add the statute language back to that policy. And just a little background on that statute, Statute 121A dot 038 was adopted in 2023. And really that impacted the way that schools do active shooter drills. Step one is it defined what an active shooter drill is. And by definition, an active shooter drill is an emergency preparedness drill designed to teach students, teachers, school personnel, and staff how to respond in the event of an armed intruder on campus. Our philosophy is run, hide, or fight when we prepare for active shooters within our schools. So by definition, the policy committee and the safety committee felt that we fall under that definition of an active shooter drill. If we fall under the definition of active shooter drills or perform active shooter drills, there's a host of things that we need to become compliant with by statute. And just a few to highlight that we talked about at the last school board meeting. We need to include a reasonable amount of time after the active shooter drills in our schools to debrief with students. Our active shooter drills must be accompanied by an announcement that informs students and staff that there is no danger, that this is a drill and only a drill. School must provide notice to families when possible, 24 hours in advance, that we're doing an active shooter drill and then students can opt out with no negative consequences. And lastly, um, in that list of 13 items that we must comply with, school boards must discuss the effect of active shooter drills on the safety of students and staff and the effect of active shooter drills on the mental health and wellness of students and staff. And at the last school board meeting, we highlighted that, um, the effect of those active shooter drills, in our opinion, really positively prepares us so that we know what to do in the very rare event that would happen. But we are also acknowledging that, you know, trauma is a real thing and when you bring this up in schools, uh, it could trigger some things for students. So we understand that there is a downside to that as well.
Doctor, can I ask a question?
Please.
Um, could you just, high, high level, quick overview of, like, what does that processing look like in that time after the drill? With teachers, like just.
Yep, so this would primarily be for the secondary level, so we'll speak about the middle and high school. So in our preparedness plans, we start with lockdowns. Just simply, hey, there's lots of reasons that we might lock the door. Uh, one of those reasons might be if there's somebody in the building that shouldn't be in the building. That might be an angry parent, that might be, you know, whoever. So just locking the door. The next level to that is that there is somebody in the building that shouldn't be. Knowing where that person is, let's say that they're in the gym in the middle school, we would make decisions as staff and students. Decision number one is to leave the building. So if you're on the opposite end of the building and we know where the bad guy is, we'd want to get out. And then the final step to that, in very, very rare occasion, would be to try to distract that individual. So we would have that conversation in our classrooms to prepare students for that and we would progressively work through that. So first drill, lockdown. Second drill, here's where the person is. You make the decision to, to run or hide. And then, um, the debrief is talking about how this is preparedness and being prepared allows us to know what to do. It's a peace of mind. Very rare would this happen, but this is why we do it. Explaining to students and then also letting students know that our student support services are available if anybody would like to talk about that further or if any emotions are triggered.
And one of the responsibilities this board, um, specifically.
At a regular scheduled board meeting, discussing the effects of a shooter drill on the mental health and wellness of students and the effectiveness of it. Is that an expectation of having that conversation every year? Or every time a drill is ex- happened? I, I guess I would anticipate every year, annually, and I'm just looking for the statute language right now.
And perhaps at the point at which we review the policy.
You're right.
Makes the logical sense.
Probably.
Yep.
Yeah, and, and so we're, the first reading and then this reading, we're considering our discussion of that particular element at a public board meeting by the school board.
Okay, very good.
But even if we didn't have a change at the next cycle? That to be a discussion point?
Still, still.
To make sure that we are discussing.
I would read that to say you have to do it every time you have a drill.
What?
Yeah. That as conducted an active shooter drill, must consider the following. So when you conduct a drill, you have to consider the following.
I guess I would have to read the statute. Let's see what it says.
Well, but the policy is what we're approving.
Well, I know, but we can change what the policy says.
Yeah.
Based on the statute, right? So.
See, and I guess when I was looking at the statutes, it talks about 121A point 037, that an active shooter drill has to meet what's in that policy. But that policy only says you have to have five fire drills, five lockdowns, and a tornado drill. Doesn't even mention active shooter. So is a lockdown the same as an active shooter?
So the clarification that I received from the state is that our active shooter drills, whether it be locking the door or evacuating, count as one of the five. But a lockdown is different than evacuating in preparation.
Right.
Sorry to cut you off.
That's, I'm sorry, I interrupted. And, and in the discussion that we had, this can't be combined with like a tornado drill or anything else. It has to be distinct. And there has to be notice if possible to parents so that the student can be opted out. And that student has to be provided with, um, alternative safety instruction that would have been presented during, and I'm, I understand what you're saying about the, the way it reads.
But see, I feel, based on our discussion, that a lockdown drill is different than an active shooter drill. An active shooter drill may be part of a lockdown, but you have lockdowns for many different reasons. And then every time you do that, you wouldn't have to have a debriefing at the school board. But if it is an active shooter drill where you go through all that, then there should be some discussion at the school board. For instance, if we had a huge number of people opt out, we may want to look into that. If we had a bunch of kids that needed to go see the mental health professionals, what was the root cause of that? Could we have done the drill differently? That type of stuff.
I think we'll seek some clarification on that.
Not as well, but I, my understanding from the discussions that I had been involved with and with other superintendents was that, and I think probably annually, you would need to discuss it because you would have conducted an active shooter drill. But we will seek clarification on that.
Well, I would think out of those five lockdown drills, at least one of them will be an active shooter drill.
Absolutely.
And then that's when you would do it. The other four don't have to be active shooter drills, so.
And in our current practice at the middle and high school, probably two would be the decision-making, the, the active shooter preparation piece beyond just locking the door.
And how do we do the opt-out?
The opt-out? So we haven't fully discussed this, um, but we would provide, and it's not perfect, but we would provide an alternate location for those students to go, uh, who do opt out free from some of the movement of bodies.
But is that part of the notice?
Uh, that they need to notify, excuse me, the parents need to notify the school.
No, I mean, so when we give the notice to the parents that drill, is the fact that they can opt out? No, I mean, so when we give the notice to the parents that drill, is the fact that they can opt out?
Yes, yep, that's a requirement.
Do we need to wait for clarification? Do we have more questions on this?
Yeah, do we have more questions before we have a motion?
My role.
I think that, that the item of when you would have to have discussion at a school board meeting, we can see clarification on it.
Then we're good?
And, and I think we're good. I think our plan would be, once those drills have occurred, we'd have, or at least on an annual basis, or twice a year or whatever timing those, those drills might be.
I don't think that decision precludes the passing of the policy because we've now had the discussion for this year.
It gets into the implementation of the policy at this point.
So based on that clarification, I move that we accept these two policies on their second reading.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion?
Thank you for the work you did and for defining all those things. Because it is kind of, you know, it is kind of, the definitions are important, you know?
And it's unfortunate that this has become such an important item. I mean, it is absolutely necessary that our students understand this. It's a sad state that they have to.
Uh, we have a motion and a second, discussion, discussion, discussion. We'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. We have approved policy five zero six and eight zero six. Thank you, Dr. Graff. Next up, consider policies with legislative requirements for approval with one reading.
There are any number of policies where legislative changes have required a, an adoption of policy language or in some cases, a deletion of policy language. The policy committee has looked at four policies so far with legislative changes, there'll be more to come. The first one is a policy one oh two equal educational opportunity. And that just adds a legislative change to the discrimination definition. And you can see that in red where the word unlawfully was deleted and the phrase one or more of the following was added. Policy two oh seven, public hearings, it removes the address requirement. So you no longer can require that a person provide their address when they want to in, uh, discuss or make comments about an item before a public school board meeting. Policy four nineteen, tobacco-free environment, possession and use of tobacco, tobacco-related devices and electronic devices, vaping awareness and prevention instruction. That adds a section that prohibits the school district from doing business with companies associated with tobacco products or from promoting tobacco products. And that's under the general statement of policy D in red. It adds carrying a medicine pouch as a permissible activity and it clarifies language under exceptions for an American Indian adult or student. It also adds smudging as a permissible activity and it clarifies the language under exceptions for an American Indian student or staff member that use tobacco, sage, sweetgrass and cedar to conduct individual or group smudging in a public school. And then finally, policy four twenty-five, staff development mentoring. It adds professional training provisions for paraprofessionals. And letter E, you should note, is a one-year-only item and would need to be looked at again as we move into next year to remove that item from the policy. But it talks about the test preparation and materials for the paraprofessional certification requirement. And then under reporting, there is no longer a world's best workforce after last year. It is now the comprehensive achievement and civic readiness report, C A C R. And you'll hear more about that, Mrs. Inglethorpe, next month. So I don't know if any members of the policy committee want to add items under this or discussion under this?
It's ultimately pretty small changes based on statute.
Things that can require discussion.
We don't have the history on this, but it is, I'm always, from time to time, something will come through in mild policy and you're like, where did that come from? Like, what was that really addressing?
Yeah.
And so when it's like, statements like the school district will not promote tobacco, tobacco products. Or E, whatever, delivery devices on school property or at school-sponsored events.
Someone signed a marketing deal.
But I, I support it.
I have a question. It says you can't require an address that someone wishes to speak for board. Can you ask or if they're a resident of the district?
That's a good question.
I don't think you could require it.
I don't think you can require, I think you can ask. I should double check.
I think it's just, you can just ask for the name and, and contain either the name and the name of the group representative, if any, in a brief statement of the subject to be covered. I do not think you can ask if they are a resident of the district. And actually, this might go back to some things that happened in our neighboring district where there was quite a controversy over the requesting and requiring that an address be given in order to speak on an agenda item.
We talked about this at some, I'm just curious, I'm going to admit to not having looked at the cards. On those cards, is there an, an address, the request to speak to the board, is there a, a line for address?
If there's still.
So it would be a discretionary thing, we can't require it, but they can provide it?
No, I think we've.
I would think if we, if this policy, if these policies are adopted, we should delete it.
Yep.
Okay.
And that's why I was wondering if we could.
We can double check it.
Yeah.
Yeah, ask.
I think it mentions, I just don't remember what it says.
To me, depending upon what they're speaking about, it's important to know if the individual is representing an outside interest group or representing a faction of.
And according to the policy, you can ask for the name and, and name of the group that person is representing.
But, yeah, I just think, you know, if someone's going to come in from outside and try and tell us how to run our school district, I have a problem with that, but.
I'm just kind of wondering though, there's an asterisk or a star next to address on these cards, which indicates required. But if we were to put it to the bottom and say optional, they could provide. I mean, we wouldn't have to prohibit anyone from providing their address, would we? We can, we just can't require it.
Well, words, words matter, so let's go back and look at the words.
Yeah. Badly, do you want that address?
I think, I think the language under formal request with address deleted is specific to what you can ask for.
And that was a, that was a change in the law, or yes? You don't have to know the statute, that was.
I don't, not right off the top.
I'd like to go back and look at the statute and see what the legislature did because.
If you look at the, if you look at the full policy, statute should be listed at the end of the policy.
And speaking to the policy, given the sadly, the volatility of the world we live in, I can certainly understand the concern over providing an address. And as much as we would like to have it, for whatever reason, to show that it's, it's a local concern and that kind of thing. But it's, uh, sometimes the, uh, the consequences of someone giving out an address could be fairly negative.
For sure. So where do we leave off?
We reviewed the policies, asked for questions.
We did not yet get to a motion.
We did not have a motion.
Okay.
How, there was a motion?
There was a question?
Yeah, I didn't ask if there were questions.
Who were the? Kimberly doesn't?
Kate, I think?
I'm the first one.
The first one?
I don't think we've.
I don't think we've done a motion for this.
Oh, okay, we're doing these separate.
Yes, yes, because these are first readings.
Okay.
They're only readings, I guess.
I would move that we accept these policies on one reading.
We have a motion.
I will second that.
And a second, any further discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion.
Are we voting on all four of these now?
Yes.
That's with one reading. Legislative changes, yes.
Yep, so this is one oh two, two oh seven, four nineteen, four twenty-five. All as one and only readings. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion here. Next, consider approval of gymnastics cooperative with La Sure Henderson Public Schools, Mr. Rorcasie. Still like your notebook.
Cheap for my, had to get one at the same time as my son, so it was nice and cheap, so. Yes, so this is, hopefully in front of you, you see, should be a couple of documents. One is a, um, kind of a checklist, if you will, of, um, a way to go through and get to whether we think a co-op is a good idea for our schools and our program or not. This is something that was initiated by Dr. Olson, just from, in the past, it was kind of like, we talked to the coaches, maybe had a conversation with some of the board members and then it was kind of like, yeah, let's, let's do it kind of thing. This is, gives us a little bit more structure about what we're looking for, the whys, we would, might need it. And different people to put in their opinion and have a lot of, I guess, checks and balances in order to see if it will be a positive piece. So this is something new that we're, we're going through. Hopefully you can kind of, I don't need to read through everything as far as the, you know, the step-by-step. But it is something that we're talking with the gymnastics coach. That is something that they are excited about is the possibility of having a co-op. It is something that was actually brought to me from them because of our issues with numbers overall. And so they are wanting to try and strengthen their program by just having more students be a participant. And so they're excited about it and, um, yeah, so as you go through, you can see we've gone through, we met with the advisory committee. We've had, our Big South Conference has approved this as well. And we also met with the education committee a couple of weeks ago, talking about this co-op, so. I guess we're on number ten here to see if anybody has any questions. It would not be something that impacts our financial status, it would actually probably help because they would pay for part of our rental with Gustavus. You know, would not change, change anything transportation-wise, event-wise, anything along those lines, so. Usually the biggest question is, does it impact our students? It would not overall impact our students, it might actually help by having some students that maybe aren't ready to play at that varsity level, not have to make that step up because they aren't ready yet. This would allow us to have just more numbers that can always strengthen a program, especially one that has unfortunately seen some decline over the last few years, so.
And I think Shay, if you reference the actual application for cooperative sponsorship, that, that, those are the projected number of students, first in our, from our high school or middle school program. And then just one student at this point would express an interest from La Sure Henderson. Of course, those numbers obviously can change.
Yep, and even ours are probably, that's probably a little bit higher than what we will actually get for this year. And talking with Mr. Swannberg over at La Sure, he's hopeful that by just kind of getting that door open, that there might be some more that are interested to participate as well from, from La Sure.
Can you remind me when we review these? Is it only when a change is then made to the agreement or requested to be made?
That, um, well, that had been the case and last year we kind of, with the hockey co-op, we reviewed it and made it more of a yearly thing. So it'd be something that we could add to that as well. And so, you know, if we get a large influx of all St. Peter kids that want to join gymnastics, then, you know, yeah, it'd be something that we would revisit and, and review.
And I think there's like a, a one-year out essentially, right Shay? If you were to decide you wanted to, it, it, three years from now dissolve the cooperative, I mean, that's.
Yeah, usually the, you know, the common place is to say like a one-year warning, if you will, so. Gives everybody kind of a chance to decide what they want to do moving forward from, from there. And no school can decline it, so we can't be like, hey, we don't want to do this anymore. And La Sure's like, well, too bad, you're stuck with us kind of thing. You know, but we just have to give them a, a warning that this is the path we want to take moving forward.
Yeah.
Shay, just clarification, the application indicates for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. But what Dr. Olson just said, it has really been another one year in terms of a warning if, if we would opt out. So it's really a two-year commitment, if I understand that correctly?
Yes and no. I mean, but let's say we get started and we get into early December, realize like this is just not a good fit. And we can give them an out and still like, it's not like a year to the day. Kind of like you give them a, like, hey, next year for gymnastics. You know, if we come in, you know, right after the season gets done and say, hey, we're not going to do this again next year, that's, you know, probably would get passed, but it's just kind of in bad faith to do it that way. But if you give them plenty of time and a heads up, then it's usually.
Oh, sure.
You know, so it's not like, the year is more just kind of like the guideline of the season, I guess, so that the, that program is in.
Oh, I'm certainly in favor of it, I just, uh, my primary concern is for our students.
Yep.
And we also want to have opportunities for other students, if it doesn't impact us negatively.
Yeah, the nice part with gymnastics is like, so they all do a JV and varsity at the same time. So all students get to participate whether they're on JV or varsity. Just with some of ours, we might have some that are not ready for that varsity. Especially with gymnastics, you have to be able to like, perform a certain level of skill before you even can score at a varsity meet. So we have some that are almost there but not quite there, so we'd probably not be able to fill in some events, you know, all five or six slots that are, are required for a full varsity meet. So this would help, this person that has expressed interest, has some good background in gymnastics, which is why they wanted to come here as well.
They may also want to take advantage of some academic programs, potentially.
Yeah, right. Just in case, maybe.
Um, a question I had after the education committee, I thought about this. After this happens with La Sure, if there was another school that wanted to, have, have, have we thought about that already?
I have, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, just one more.
It'd be one of those, like, we just start this process kind of over again. Like I would be, wouldn't be surprised if Tri-State United or somebody came knocking on the door pretty soon. But then that's why I think having that checklist is a really good thing to have, because it's not just like, oh, because I feel like it, you know? It's like, oh, well, if we, if we add you, now we're double A and we're going against, you know, the prior lakes and new pranks of the world that aren't, that really isn't a good benefit for our students at all. Then it's easier to kind of, here's why and have a no and, you know, those kinds of things or. So, but I think, yeah, I wouldn't be surprised if that is a possibility.
Because the seedings for athletic events still are partially based on the free and reduced lunch applications? They haven't changed that, have they? I mean, it's based on, I get, no, I, okay, let back, back, back up. It's based on attendance, but that is factored into that, correct?
It is, yeah. So for example, like for St. Peter's, you can see our enrollment on that application was seven hundred and eleven. Few years ago it was about that and our high school league enrollment was six hundred and six. So it takes into those numbers, which is why we're at that two A or like single A for, for gymnastics and, you know, that's a whole nother conversation about where we're at for other sports. But then when we have a co-op, it takes half of that, so it takes half of La Sure's enrollment to add that to ours to whether or not we make it to that next level up. And so, you know, for a. And so, you know, for St. Peter adding La Sure, it would not automatically bump us to that second level or two A of gymnastics when there's only two levels, but all of a sudden you add another Tri-State United, it might, you know, I don't know what that math looks like, but. So they take that half of the other school that you're adding on, the full enrollment of the largest school, and then half of each of the. Unfortunately, like, you take a one student, we're still taking half of La Sure's enrollment, so the percentages don't work out, but a lot easier on the high school league to do it that way, I'm sure, so.
I know, I'm just confused because they changed how they're giving out some aid from the state, and they took it away from the free and reduced lunch. And so I was just wondering if they were changing how they were going to be figuring out some, I'm letting my brain go in too many different places, Shay.
So you're just talking enrollment in general?
Enrollment is just, I just need to let the cards fall where they may and just enjoy the ride, and it'll be fine, really, honestly.
And they honestly have not come out and said what they're going to be using, with a little bit of the conversations I've had. You know, they are going to use free and reduced, possibly county numbers, like, there's a lot of different ways they can go to see how that impacts each school, but I'm not sure.
But it didn't impact us so well in the other area, so that's why I wanted to know.
Yeah, so I'm I'm not sure how, what that, what that is yet, I haven't heard, this is a year that will actually get re- readjusted this this school year, so we'll know more moving forward, so in the, you know, the first step is usually after the new year, they have a, kind of, they start the dominoes of. So we've submitted all of our information about enrollment, and then they go through and kind of give us.
Could be interesting.
Yeah.
Well, and I think the other factor to note is that in the event that another school would be added, and there may be reasons why you would not want to do that based on going through a process. I mean, you can always petition the state high school league to stay in a class based on other circumstances, which is what we've done with the hockey cooperative.
Yes, if we if we stayed where our hockey true enrollment would be, we'd be as big as, you know, Eden Prairie, you know, but competition-wise, that's not good for us, we're Eden Prairie, so, you know, like, it's just, so we're able to petition down competition-wise and and a lot of the conversation is, like, we get one student from Bell Plain, we don't necessarily take on two hundred and fifty of their kids as far as the enrollment goes, you know, and so, so it'd be kind of that same conversation about this co-op as well.
If a third school approached us, is the decision ours alone? La Sure doesn't get to factor into that, do they?
They would have to agree as well, because they're part of a cooperative, but if you didn't have all parties agreeing, it's a no-go.
Is that on the checklist here? I'm guessing it is.
What's that?
Like, I'm, okay, I'm just, we're playing, but we're adding that third school. Then that must be on the checklist here somewhere, like, would they, that.
Is it, would it would have placed the activity in a higher level of classification at the section level? That's really the factor.
I mean, even if it would not put you in there, does La Sure have a voice in deciding?
Is, does that other school have a voice?
They do, but with it being so outweighed, I think that they would be like, yeah, we're going to do what you want to do, because it's your program. When you get into, like, we're now the Minnesota River Bulldogs, and so there's a lot more, you know, equality as far as number of students that they're providing, then it's, yeah, like, we better make sure we're all on the same page, but with this one, because we could also be like, okay, well, we'd rather go with TCU because they're going to, you know, pay this much money for the, and so now we want to dissolve the partnership with La Sure, so they're kind of playing that game if they want to, you know, pull that over our our feet, so. In the, in that case, we would hold, like, the cards, but knowing Mr. Swannberg very well, and and then over there, I don't see that being a thing, but it's a, you know, surprise to happen, for sure.
You're you're in a position to decide yes or no.
Yeah.
We already had a motion on this?
I don't believe so.
I'll make a motion to approve for La Sure to join, to form a cooperative for gymnastics.
I will second, motion and a second, further discussion?
All right, so I appreciate when we have opportunities like like this that come to us and, you know, and opportunities where it makes good sense for everyone involved, you know, it's just for the betterment of everyone, so. And I appreciate having the checklist.
Yeah, I like that.
It gives us a formality.
Me too.
Yeah.
Well, and those numbers are low, and hopefully we can get some more girls, and that just builds excitement.
Right.
And so, it would be nice to see those numbers grow a little bit for those girls.
Yep.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Discussion, discussion. We will proceed to vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, we approve gymnastics cooperative with La Sure Henderson Public Schools, thank you Shay.
Shay gets to stay there.
I'm going to stay right here.
Still has a nice haircut.
Yep, still here.
Uh, next up, consider approval of a resolution supporting the district's application for a grant from the Minnesota State High School League, Mr. Rorcasie.
So this is the same one that we've come to the board with the last, I guess, four years now since I've been in this role, but this is through the Minnesota State High School League Foundation, they have a Form A and a Form B. Form A is to help schools get some money back for the scholarships that they give to students to participate in act-in any activities, mainly MSHSL activities, but really it's just a money that they give back to schools based off of free and reduced and participation numbers. There's a worksheet that I had Tiffany fill out, and we would send that in, and then they use their formula, whatever that is, to say, here's how much money you get back, and, you know, we get the money. So it's pretty, yeah, it's pretty much kind of free money back, but I wish I knew, like, what the actual formula was, but to say, like, here's how much we should be expecting, but I I don't, I just know the numbers that we have in front of you.
Well, and I I'm pretty sure that the legislation, the state high school league tried to get an exemption from the sales tax on tickets for state tournament events, and they weren't able to get that legislation passed. But they were able to get legislation passed where then the state pays them back into their foundation for the amount of that sales tax, which is kind of a goofy roundabout thing, but at the end of the day, it's good for us, so.
Yeah, and the high school league, just with the last couple of years, is in a very good situation financially, so our dues, as far as, like, a member school has gone down quite a bit, so they do have some money that they're wanting to give back to districts, so you know, every little bit helps, obviously.
So when do you find out?
Um, we would, it's not due until November twelfth or fifteenth, and then usually we get the check right around the holidays. Usually, I believe, if I remember correctly, just in the past, it's been anywhere from like four to eight thousand dollars, give or take. You know, so, so it's it's fairly significant, it's not, you know, which is for our amount for fees to participate is, is quite a few scholarships that it helps to cover.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I move the resolution.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Am I reading this right, that we have four hundred and ninety students that are free and reduced, but only twenty-two are participating?
They didn't have the.
Those are the participate in the activity program.
Yeah. Oh, so the four hundred and ninety is our number, apparently.
Total number of students or total number of free and reduced students?
I believe those would be free and reduced students.
Okay.
And the unduplicated number.
That means there are twenty-two individuals out of that four hundred and ninety that participate.
Correct.
So we have four hundred and sixty-seven kids that are free and reduced and not participating.
Correct.
Maybe I'm being that wrong, but I, my interpretation, and again, I reserve the right to be wrong, but I, I believe that the twenty-two are number of students on free and reduced that participate in only one activity. The others would be multiple activities, either two or three. Again, that's my layman's interpretation. If you look at the examples with Sally Smith and Bill Johnson.
So like, so maybe I need to ask Tiffany to re- relook at step one, because I don't have any of that access, so I just have her fill this out, but.
Well, the way it says Sally counts as one student regardless the number of activities.
Exactly.
Okay. And Bill counts as one student, just because he participated in one. So if that total unduplicated count.
I just think, I think, sorry to.
Sally counts in that.
Yeah, certainly.
But so there are only twenty-two people that are participating.
They might all be in three things.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's what you're saying.
And I can have, like I said, have Tiffany relook at those numbers, unless those numbers seem, again, I don't have not sure if you do those information, that information, but I don't know if there's a hundred and fifty students that have filled, in the twelfth grade that have filled out the free and reduced.
So that's filled out the form or qualified?
Like, qualified, that's what I mean, so like, I'm guessing, I wonder if she maybe just marked down.
Mrs. Prackby, do you have a sheet?
If I could, Bill, are you, what you, is what you're asking, the, or is what you're making a point here, that there are very few students who have, who qualify for free and reduced lunch in three twenty-three, who are participating in activities? Is that what you're noticing?
I'm I'm concerned if we have that number of people and only twenty-two of them are participating in one activity. I would like somehow to see if we can't get that number that's participating greatly.
I think that that makes good sense to me, yeah, that it's a very.
Right.
Still not convinced that that's proper interpretation.
Well, I can't believe we have a hundred and fifty seniors that are qualified for free and reduced lunch.
Well, maybe we just probably just need to clarify, just to make sure that we even have the twenty-two number right.
I'll have, because I don't think that step one number is correct after the discussion.
We don't have a hundred and fifty seniors.
I was going to say the number must be.
We have a hundred and sixty-one total seniors.
Yeah.
Yeah, it could have just been a.
So I think it's fifteen.
Regardless, I think we want to support the.
Yes.
We do.
Yes.
But we want to turn in a correct.
Absolutely, but that's what.
What is the, what is the date of the, uh, November board meeting?
November sixteenth, I believe. Is that correct?
Bill, that was my point, we want to clarify to make sure we know.
You would just support, support the application and would.
Oh, perfect.
And I can, and I can like provide.
Data if necessary.
Somebody with updated numbers, but.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, so we can support the application, but we'll do a double check to make sure the numbers are right before it's submitted.
And the fact that that ratio is as large or small as it is may impact on the age that you get.
Right.
That's why it's important to get it correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I thought we had to have it right before we approved it, but. Okay, so we have it, we just need to do the ayes.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second.
It's a resolution.
Yeah.
Oh, it's a resolution, any other discussion? Discussion, discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, it's a resolution, so we'll go around the table, and it's Rod Spock. Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Student?
Aye.
Aye, Mr. Cowell?
Aye.
Mr. Dixon?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
The resolution carries, so we've approved, we're supporting the district's application for a grant from the Minnesota State High School League Foundation. We'll double check the data and make sure that it's up to date before it is signed by the board chair and board clerk and sent off to the high school league.
All right.
Thanks Shay.
Thanks Shay.
Thanks Shay.
Next up, school calendars for the next three years.
So, uh, tonight, we're going to ask you to consider the school calendar for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six. You've had these three calendars presented to you at the last study session, they were presented to the I believe, education committee, correct?
Yes.
Uh, and we have shared the calendars with the leadership of the St. Peter Education Association. We've also had numerous discussions with our construction management company, ICS, in terms of their need to have as long a summer time period for construction as possible. As we moved through the discussion on the calendars, it became apparent to me that we had some questions that were out there regarding our twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight calendars. So, while those are presented as draft calendars, we're not asking for action on those calendars tonight. The ICS folk have indicated to us that the most important thing for them right now is to have as long a calendar as possible, or as long a timeframe as possible, in the summer of two thousand twenty-five. That's due in part because they want to install a chiller so that the, most of the building, not all, correct, John, most of the building would be cooled appropriately at the start of next school year. Uh, anybody who is in the middle school or early, early childhood sections of the building in late August would very much appreciate and be happy with that particular idea because it was really hot in the hallways and classrooms of that building in in August, so. The calendar for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six has a post-Labor Day start. Uh, note that this is the latest, or excuse me, the earliest Labor Day possible. Uh, it ends the school year on Thursday, June fourth, with a teacher workday and graduation on Friday, June fifth. Uh, and we've looked at lots of different ways of of shifting this calendar around, but in order to have even semesters, particularly for the high school where credit is is given on the semester basis, having an eighty-six day and eighty-seven day semester is is important, trying to balance out the quarters is important, and trying to end quarters on either a Thursday or Friday is important because then there is a teacher workday and a logical break for students following the end of the quarter. So, through those steps, the education committee has recommended, and I would recommend your adoption of the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six calendar as presented, with the understanding that the start dates for the elementary, middle school, and parent-teacher conferences will be included at a later date, but those would follow the same pattern as in past years. That being, as an example, the first two days of the school year for high school would be parent-teacher conferences at the middle and elementary level, et cetera. So, questions?
What was the Minnesota response?
Well, I think they realized that you you can't get everything you want in a calendar. Uh, and I would agree with that, and, and, you know, we kind of referenced the process that had been used where there were multiple people involved, and there were multiple calendars that were favored, and nobody was happy with that process either, so. Uh, thi-this, I think, is a reasonable school calendar, I I do think that, uh, taking a look at how to shift those draft calendars so that there could be an earlier end to the school year would be important, but they're out there for a beginning placeholder at this point in time. Again, we're not asking you to take action on those calendars tonight.
So when we had the education committee, that was before these became drafts.
Correct.
These two, so what what changed from?
Just hearing lots, you know, just different comments, including with the the teachers and even discussions at the administrative level about, yeah, boy, that getting out on June, whatever it was, ninth, it seems really late, and is that going to be productive? But then there really wasn't any way of adjusting those calendars right now, so I think, especially as we get into identifying contractors, go through that bid process, you'd be able to be, maybe work with them and look at ways where you could perhaps start school a bit earlier and end a bit earlier, shift some other times around, but we, those are unknowns at this point in time, but I think that's going to be pretty possible.
Okay.
And I agree, I think what we just, what we discussed in, there, there, we have three templates, we have one that we need to approve, and I think that the having just something in front of us as a worksheet or as a template is a good idea.
Well, done with a difficult task.
So I would move that we accept the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six calendar as proposed here.
Second, we have a motion and a second, further discussion?
So when do we approve, like, twenty-six, twenty-seven, what is the normal timeline for approving that next year's calendar?
I I'm not sure what your practice has been in the past, we, in in my tenure before, the typical goal was to approve two-year calendars.
Yeah.
Two calendars in a row. So I think getting the construction process. So I think getting the construction process outlined with the bids, uh, identifying who those contractors are, continuing to work with ICS, uh, with, with John, with Seth, with our project oversight committee will get more clarity. Uh, and it, my, my thought is that you, you would be able to start school earlier and end school earlier, but that still remains to be seen. I mean, we still need to kind of, that would be a weighing factor.
Okay.
So I would think maybe, uh, next year at this time, you might be back in a calendar discussion again for those next two years.
I was gonna stay there for a minute there. You weren't answering my question. I was gonna say you were a pretty good politician there for a minute, but.
Did I get an answer?
You did finally answer, so.
Good, good, good.
Any further discussion? Discussion, discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same side. Motion carries. We've approved the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school calendar. Thank you. Next up, information items. First up is a report on student enrollment.
Yeah, so you just take a look on the, uh, page fifty-five, the item right behind the, uh, dent on the report on student enrollment. Uh, those numbers that you see on actual enrollment are from October fourteenth and October first on the left uh, chart. And then we have weighted pupil units on the right chart. So this is trending in a really, really good direction. And just to share with you, as of this morning, we were up four more students. So we're at two thousand thirty-five, uh, actual students, not including ECSE. Uh, so that's up four students from where we were on October fourteenth. Um, and, uh, we're, again, moving in the right direction. And the o- other nice part, you'll note that grades seven through twelve and Rock Bend are weighted at a one-point-two factor. And, uh, so that twenty-two seventy-two, uh, weighted, uh, adjusted pupil unit number is what we get our state aid off of. So we're happy. We like those numbers.
So a couple of questions. Um, that Rock Bend classroom, how many could, how many is the good number for that Rock Bend classroom?
It's full at fifteen.
Okay. Um, what about, I mean, I like the numbers, but are we, do we have any class, um, grades that are like, uh-oh? Like these are, this is a lot of kids, like?
You know, in, in recent years, and especially since COVID, we've really built up our credit recovery program in the high school.
Okay.
So St. Peter kids, we don't have a, currently don't have a waitlist.
Okay.
So, so your, is your question more like at, at the elementary grades, for example?
I'm more, yeah, the elementary, but I really did appreciate the high school update as well, but yeah, I was thinking more for the elementary.
I think our.
I really did appreciate that, yeah.
I think our, our, uh, elementary numbers are up. There are a number of overload assignments. And we're getting close to an overload assignment in kindergarten. So I think probably, am I right, in grades, we're close, and are we there at grade one? No, we're close in grade one as well.
Closer in kindergarten. I misspoke during our meeting.
Okay. Yeah, so we're close there, but then.
Fourth grade has one less section than we usually do. We have five sections in the fourth grade, so they're at twenty-seven, which is right there at overload. They're creeping up there a little bit. And third and second grade are all about twenty-four, twenty-five.
So those are really still good numbers.
Yeah, but morale can remain high and the teachers can appreciate that, you know, we have the numbers and we are all on the same team and that we like those numbers high. I know that teachers, it's hard when classrooms get full. I recognize that, but, um, I'd hope that we all could appreciate that these enrollment numbers are growing. It, it is, it's.
As we're looking at our budget adjustment plan, we really like these numbers.
We really, I mean, we obviously, I mean, I'm not saying that. It's just, I know there's a, there's a side of that where it's like the, the kids are going into those classrooms and the teachers, the rooms get full, so.
Yep, for sure.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Dr. Wilson.
Okay.
Next up, fundraising plans by site. Twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
We'll just ask the principals to roll through those fundraising plans with you and see if you have any questions.
Yeah, I guess we're just up here in case you have any questions about it. The high school does, um, have one new one on there this year, and that is the, uh, fundraising that their theater program will be doing specifically at the Fall Musical.
And the middle schools are the same. Uh, we'll do the fruit sales, optional for sixth through eighth grade band. PBS does a box top and grocery receipts. Student council does two to three dances per year. And then we do our scholastic book fair twice a year.
Per board policy, fundraising plans are presented on an annual basis to the school board. Do you have any questions about the middle or high school fundraising plans? Okay.
Thank you.
South and North?
I guess I'm next, since we're going oldest to youngest. Um, the North fundraising is the same. We've, we've trimmed some out. We used to collect um, receipts and things from our area grocery stores, and that's, um, not really fruitful too much anymore, so we've taken that off. Um, and currently we are doing like Club's Choice fundraising, which is for playground updates. That's going on actually right now. And the rest just goes back to, you know, books in the media center through the scholastic fair. Um, some Saints funds with, um, a, a tiny markup for your books. Math-a-thon, that money goes toward, um, t-shirts for students, um, at North. All, every student gets a t-shirt. And student council has a couple items, sticker machine and school store, which they use to, um, fund projects they have around the building.
So what is the sticker machine?
It's exactly how it sounds. It is a sticker machine in the media center. Put some quarters in, yep, you get football teams and stickers and stuff like that. Well, he actually assigns where those funds go. So last year, uh, student council did purchase a set of soccer nets and goalposts for the playground. So every year they try to set their goal on something and, um, that's where they get their funds from.
There are no changes right now to the South list from last year. Um, we also do the scholastic book fair to help fund, uh, media center and classroom library purchases. The yearbook, um, for us, it goes towards some different building initiatives, um, sometimes, uh, like new toys and things for our imagination stations. Um, we do food sales at parent council events, and, and we also just finished up our Saints Pride clothing fundraiser. Um, and those funds go to parent council for their events. We do a read-a-thon, uh, different than the math-a-thon, but the, it funds the same kind of PBS t-shirts for the kids. And then, again, we have also trimmed back on the family fresh and high-v receats, so we do, we still collect box tops for our activity account. And we just had our parent council meeting and they would like to do fundraisers for the playground next year, so be looking for that next year this time.
Questions?
Can I say a quick question? Box tops, what, what boxes or products are they? Can anybody contribute? How is that?
Good question. So it's now an app. It used to be actual like things that you would cut off of the boxes. Now it's an app. It's like General Mills cereal, Nature Valley granola bars. And so it's an app. You have to download to your email address and then you can pick which school it goes to and you scan a photo of your receipts. And then it does a little confetti and tells you how much money you just raised for the school. So I'm learning all about this now.
Yes. And, and our office staff really likes the digital version, cause they used to have to group them into forties or fifties, send them in.
Good point.
Digital's good.
Great, okay, thank you.
All right.
Next up is review of policy manual revisions, first reading. We just have one.
The one you have is policy five twenty-two, title nine, sex discrimination policy grievance procedure and process. Due to significant changes to the title nine rules, uh, the MSBA, Minnesota School Boards Association recommendation was to adopt a new model policy in its entirety. And so that's what the policy review committee, uh, has looked at and, um, presented for a first reading. The changes in that policy are uploaded in board book. Uh, if you would like a specific copy of that policy, Kimberly can download one and get it to you, but you'd be looking for, I think, the green changes or additions in that policy. Uh, and we went through that in a, uh, sort of page by page where there were changes necessary format at the last policy review committee.
It's bulky.
It's bulky.
So the one that's in board book is not, that's just like all black and white, so there's a different one?
That's with all the stuff accepted.
With all the stuff accepted?
Yep, with all the changes accepted.
Okay.
So if you wanna see one with the, for whatever reason, it doesn't do red line when I do it, it has green.
The green line cap?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that would be, if you take a look at that for a first reading and then, uh, if you had a, if you had a chance to look at that policy, if you had any questions or suggestions, to get those to the policy review committee. And at our November meeting, we would look at that and determine whether or not to bring that back for a second reading and adoption at the November school board meeting.
All right.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Next up is reports, building principals.
Well, as you said, oldest to youngest, early and early. Noted.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. Um, just a little update on early childhood. We are having our first of three early childhood screenings, uh, this week on Thursday, as you might recall. Early childhood screening is required by law before a child enters kindergarten. So we hold those three times a, the, three times a year, and children ages three years, six months and up are invited to come, um, go through a developmental screener and then any concerns are brought to parents, um, potential assessment, that type of thing. And so we appreciate our families coming out for that, so that our first of three this year is Thursday, so we're excited about that. Next week, we have our first early release of the year, and so we will continue on with our Read Act. The first one, right? Our Read Act training, um, with our staff members, so that will be good. At the same time, um, as you did the first reading of the title nine policy, we're holding a title nine training. We have a representative from Kennedy Graven coming down. That person will meet with our building principals and our student support team to go over those new title nine, um, requirements and rules. So that's what we've got on our agenda.
I'm gonna go out of age order and talk about Ashawa first. Um, at Ashawa Learning Academy, they've been doing quite a bit around Indigenous Peoples' Day. Um, we have a fair number of students from Red Lake Nation, so they've been very engaged in some project-based learning with Mr. Doug Boyer as the leader. And then we are starting to prepare for some transitions. Um, our electives rotate at Ashawa. And so with only two weeks left of this quarter, we're starting to talk about new teachers, new classes, new rooms, what transitions look like, just so that that goes smoothly for that group of students. Um, at South Elementary, we've had lots of exciting events. We had Fire Safety Week in early October that we celebrated with the St. Peter Fire Department. They came and educated our students on fire safety at school and at home, and they all got to take a tour of the fire engine, which was very exciting. Um, and I just, I'm sure that Annette's gonna talk about Hispanic Joy Day, but I just wanna give a thank you to Veronica Castillo-Clark and Liliana Figueroa and Mariposa Romero, who brought a group of native Spanish-speaking students to South and North um, for some, um, activities with our students and just to really highlight some cultural things and traditions. Our kids love the quinceañera dresses especially. They, they thought they were all princesses. It was very fun, so I'm sure you, similar experience. Mm-hmm. Yes, so just thanks to them, um, and thanks to the students who just did a standout job. Um, this month, our first grade classes are going to Ferguson's Orchard, kind of a, an extension on their science lessons about seasons and, um, specifically tying in with the apple orchard, what happens to trees throughout the seasons. Um, so it's a really fun experience for them in the fall. And our teachers, again, are doing a great job, and we have had lots of parents that are helping with the chaperoning, so a really fun event. And I mentioned before, we had our first parent council meeting. We had really good engagement. And they are looking forward to providing parent input on a couple of specific items this year and planning some events and raising funds for playground improvements, just like North.
That's right.
Yes, so.
Never improve the playground enough. Free time is important. Greetings from North Elementary, and I, I do wanna echo, um, what Janet talked about with Vero and her native Spanish-speaking students. They were at North. They did a fabulous job. I heard from a lot of the homeroom teachers, they just wanted more time to get through those rotations. They set up stations in the media center and the music room, um, art room, and, uh, teachers and their students just wanted some more time uh, to celebrate and learn more about Hispanic Heritage Month, so that's phenomenal. We really appreciate that partnering. And then also, um, pretty much right the next week, we had Shar, um, who's chair of NAIPAC, um, come to North with high school students um, and middle school students, and they set up a traditional teepee, and where, this is the first time we've done this. And I was thinking like, oh, we could probably set that up in the gym. Yeah, that's not gonna, that's gonna hit the ceiling. That would hit the ceiling easily. So we had to be outside at eight-thirty in the morning, and it was a little brisk, a little chilly out there, but they set up about a thirty-foot teepee in about five minutes, fully canvassed. Like, it was amazing. And then just talk about how they were traditionally used and then broken back down again so efficiently. Um, and so that was, that was really wonderful. So we did two sessions of that um, on that following Monday, so thanks to Shar and her student representatives. Uh, Bike to School Day, uh, was on October ninth. That just continues to grow larger and larger and larger. I mean, we just, we call it pack the racks and they were, the racks were covered. We could not see them, um, probably around one hundred bikes out there. Um, and so, uh, always wanna send a thanks out to Officer Hughes. He helps to coordinate that. He talks with, um, uh, the deputies, um, in Nicola County here. They show up, they're doing crossing guards, detectives, uh, through the PD locally, and so they're all over the place. And like I always say, we always, even the bussers are walking. They get dropped off at First Lutheran and they kinda are in awe when they get off the bus, like, we have to walk a block? Yep. It's downhill. You don't have to go back up. It's okay. So they're made, they actually end up sprinting the whole way down, of course, once they get to North. So, so that's October ninth. Um, Science and Nature Camp is tomorrow. We have about eighty students, third and fourth graders going, two teachers. So that's like a record number, lots of parent chaperones. Um, so it'll be a little, little quiet, uh, tomorrow at North with eighty students down, but that's a full day event. Um, and so thanks to, um, Ms. Zitter to help to coordinate that and get all the parent chaperones and groups set up, so can't wait to hear about all the learning. Conferences coming up, K eight, same days, November seventh, eighth, and twelfth. I'm mentioning it, um, cause I'm, I'm excited. We have a steering committee of eight teachers, um, that are gonna do, um, some stu-, like, some really hands-on student-led conference. Um, and we're taking a, um, playbook out of Hattie's research and, uh, students are gonna provide some visual, uh, learning over their course of their two, three-year career, fourth graders, of course, to show like how they're growing on screening tools like A-reading and A-math and Sabers. And so they have to plot that out on their, their script and then do a lot of reflective statements and then lead their conferences. So we kinda wanna, we wanna see how those eight homerooms, um, potentially are different than the rest of the traditional conferences going forward, and that could potentially be a a template that we use second, third, and fourth grade going forward. So I'm excited about that. And of course, Mohammed shared that he's studying, or he's practicing his chess for the Passion Projects, which are coming up on October thirtieth. One hour in the afternoon at celebration of the end of the first quarter of the year, and, uh, many staff members just put out, um, activities, games, hobbies, and then they lead that with students, and they sign up for which activity they wanna go to. And I will be seeing how well I can do at chess again.
Russia. Good luck.
Yes, thank you. I'm gonna need it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Last minute, I just invited Shay up because we've got so many awesome fall athletic activities going on and great kids, so I would forget something surely.
Will we go first?
Sure.
Sure, all right. Um, yeah, it's been actually an incredible fall for, um, especially our female teams have had a really, really fun fall day. Um, we've had, um, three conference championships between cross-country, girls soccer, and girls tennis. Um, and we also have had, um, a few records set between, um, school records and set assists by Iris Elias in volleyball, um, which is over two thousand, which is, um, a pretty crazy number. Um, and, um, Kira Frederick in s-, um, single-season goals for, um, soccer, and she just recently set the school record for cross-country at the Big South Meet last week. So she's had a pretty exciting, and she was just named All-State yesterday, was it yesterday at the banquet? Um, so she's had a pretty fun ten days, but, um, so yeah, it's been a very fun, um, a couple of weeks in that regard is just kinda celebrating those, those things. Um, Coach Bree Lantener also had her hundredth career win. And, um, so it's just been a, kind of a fun way to, um, you know, celebrate all of those accomplishments as well as, um, get. as well as getting ready for a big week of section events with volleyball starting it off on Wednesday. Football plays at Hutchinson on Saturday at three o'clock. And then our cross-country has their meet in Mankato Thursday afternoon starting at three-thirty. And if our girls run like they have been, hopefully a good shot that they will go as a team representing St. Peter in the state tournament or state meet, I guess you would say. So I want to be very excited because I'm not sure when they sent us like a team, if ever honestly, so. But yeah, it's been a very fun, fun and exciting fall. And then the weird part is girls hockey starts on Monday, so.
Yep. Thank you. Good job.
Yeah, thanks.
I would have forgotten half of that.
Okay, picking over the middle school. So on October eleventh, we had our first celebration day. Celebration day is very similar to Passion Day at North. Sorry, he's over there. Passion Project Day at North, where teachers offer a little mini-sessions and the students elect which ones that they want to participate in. We set those dates based on pride tickets. We set goals for the number of pride tickets kids earn. We set that at one thousand five hundred. Typically, that takes us a quarter. So it works out about one per quarter. This year, the kids did it in four weeks, so we've got to double our pride ticket goal next time. But a great day. Ryan Mira, who's our fifth grade science teacher, and Shelby Glover, who is our sixth grade science teacher, taking eighty-three fifth and sixth graders to the Science and Nature Conference tomorrow at GAC. What that is, is an opportunity for kids to do little mini-sessions with some hands-on science. We all know science is the most important topic that schools offer. If I were to go, I would be joining the Super Tasters Session. It's the science of taste, the bug show, and animals nobody loves. Those would be my, my choices. I don't get to go this year. And then lastly, our sixth grade students are starting to prepare for BizTown, their annual trip to BizTown in St. Paul. A little reminder, BizTown is a simulated city that students run for a day. They've started preparing in interdisciplinary units in their English and math courses. So Brittany Walters and Jake Malls are taking that on. Some of the highlights from that experience really are managing finances, going through a job application process where they actually, students actually interview with community members. And then culminates with a trip to St. Paul and running a, running a town for a day. So pretty cool stuff there. And then I said lastly, but I do have one more, conferences are coming up. So the evening of November seventh and twelfth, and then all day November eighth. We really encourage families to come in and check in on their students.
I failed to bring my glasses up, so hopefully I don't forget something. Everybody else talked about Joy Day at the high school and some of the spinoffs that happened at the other buildings. But thank you to those of you who were able to come last, not last Friday, a week and, and a couple of days ago, Friday. Hispanic Latino Joy Day was a huge hit with kids. Our attendance numbers were way up compared to the Joy Days that we held last year. So I think that just shows that kids and their families are seeing it as a valuable experience too. And, and the kids, and we have a class, a native Spanish speakers class that has over thirty students in the course. And those kids, that we, we had very knowledgeable and talented speakers that we hired to come in and musicians and dancers. And by far, the most popular sessions were hosted by our very own students. They have spent, they spent just a ton of time prepping for them and their mothers were in cooking. And it was, it was just a really great day. And, and we have, we don't have the feedback yet, but I can see the difference in how kids are carrying themselves in the hall and seeing themselves as more of a part of the school community. So it was another great day. Thanks especially to John Warren and Vero Castillo-Clark and Liliana and Mariposa for all the work that they've put in on that. And we will miss Liliana terribly. She's done a great job for us. So thank you to, hopefully the city will let her go every once in a while to come back and participate in this kind of stuff. We're one step closer to being able to offer the Minnesota Transfer Curriculum at the high school. We had another teacher accepted to, to teach a chemistry course at the high school. So we really just have a couple more logistical things to sort out with schedules and we should be set to offer that starting next school year.
Mrs. Single, why don't you remind the board and listening public what that transfer curriculum is?
The Minnesota Transfer Curriculum is, is a certification. We would be the first high school in the state of Minnesota to have an official certification in a program to offer students. They would have all of their general ed courses that they would, that would normally take about two years to, to take in college. Those would transfer directly into any Minnesota State University or college or, or community college. So it really opens up, it's not just that certification that's important, but it really opens up some opportunities for kids once they are in college. If they go in thinking one thing and they've, but they've already got all these generals out of the way, that opens up a lot of opportunities for them to try different things once they get to college. The hope is that we have a cohort of kids when they enter high school. I know that sounds very young, especially when, say you're talking to an eighth grader. But it's, and a cohort of kids that will have that four-year plan set for themselves so that, so that they know that that's their track as they're coming, coming through high school. It's a great opportunity for families, also a huge cost savings for, for families as well. That doesn't mean that other kids can't be in those courses. They'll still fill up. But at least that cohort of kids would be following each other through. So we're, we're getting very close. Other exciting news, our Fall Musical is coming up. And, and one interesting, it's the Addams Family this year, so it'll be a fun one. They're also participating in something called the Hennepin Arts Spotlight Education Program, which means that somebody will be coming from the Hennepin Theater Arts to, to view the performance. And then there's a high school day where it's a possibility that if they're selected, they would be able to perform at the State Theater in Minneapolis. It's the first time we've ever done it, but I, we've got such a talented group of theater advisors and directors and students. So they've been working really hard. The set is, is going to be amazing. And they've been working extra hard because they know that they're going to have some professionals coming down to watch the show. So hopefully, you're all going to be able to make it to the Fall Musical this year. It's going to be great. It is the, I don't know the specific date, but it's the weekend before Thanksgiving.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Four performances, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and a Sunday Monday. Thank you. Thanks.
I just want to echo the comments about the Hispanic Latino Joy Day. I thought it was a phenomenal event, an opportunity for our students to learn a whole lot more about Spanish heritage, Spanish heritage and culture. And a way to get more of our students to feel included and feel a part of the school setting. And as I was out there, particularly in the afternoon, I was reminded of two things. How you can have fun and learn, number one, and two, how I didn't really miss chaperoning dances.
No mosh pit for you?
No, no, no. And then I just wanted to, to mention Seth Putts received an award from Masmus for his work in managing school facilities. He was recognized as one of the honorees at the recent Masmus State Convention. And then also, Dr. Graff and I will be meeting with Chief of Police and SRO, I think it's this week, Wednesday maybe, to continue our sort of tabletop on how we conduct our threat assessment, protocol, communication, and collaboration with local law enforcement. So that's it for me.
Board members around the table.
Um, I just love having the student spotlight back again. It's so great to hear from our students and just goodness gracious, all the activities that are going on. It's just fantastic. Just having the Joy Days for all of our students and musicals and goodness gracious, our student athletes are doing fantastic too. So thanks for everything that you're doing.
Just at the risk of being redundant to the previous redundancy, prior to the redundancy before that, the Hispanic Latino Joy Day, just wanted to make one comment of that. I had the opportunity, one of the sessions I attended was the Chief of Police from Lesure. And a woman and went through some really interesting background of the struggles she had had because of her gender and being in that role and how that's worked out. She has served as a state patrol as well as a city. So very interesting. Go ahead and be redundant to my redundancies.
No, I, I actually don't really have anything. Just like I kind of talked about a little, I was going to talk about the increase enrollment and excited about that and just kind of give a little shout out to the teachers. Because just recognizing that, knowing, well, impartially from, you know, living with the teacher too, knowing that, you know, numbers are up and that can be stressful, but good. And so just wanted to make sure our teachers knew that we appreciate them. So. That's all I got. Sorry.
I also would like to congratulate all the fall activity teams and sports. Their success is, you know, brings pride to the community. I also want to convey a welcome or hello from Tom and Diane Martin, who was out in Oregon last week. Visiting them, Tom was a former guidance counselor and Diane taught science and math. And they say hello to their, if any of you are former students. Kate, trivia contests and so forth.
Colleague, yeah.
Yeah. So they say hello. And then I would like to also give a shout out to Stephanie Evans for the work that she's doing on the Project Oversight Committee. She represents the faculty well and the last session brought up some stuff that I had a stinkin' suspicion not too many people thought of as far as time set aside to move out of the rooms so that the people could get in to do the work that they're going to do this summer. So her input is greatly valued.
Mr. Dixon? Nothing for me. Ms. Martins?
I echo Dr. Olson not missing the dances at all because there was a lot of energy on that last part of the Joy Day. Lots of it. And all of these wonderful students that we've got, I mean, this excellence is there. And just a quick report on the Indigenous Joy Day. There were about sixty, seventy people there. And we have a really, really good, effective NAPAC and Shar is definitely among them. So just a great event was held for the third time. That's institutionalization. There we go. All right. That's it.
Thank you. Committee updates. Education, is there any update from the Education Committee?
You know, it's kind of tricky with education because, you know, it's everything we already talked about. And so to say it and then to do like a skim on anything. But just to piggyback a little bit on what Annette had said and just to kind of, to kind of highlight that a little more with that Minnesota Transfer Curriculum and to just kind of boil it down into real Tracy terms. That's like two years of college. So that's telling your kid, like, you can take your first two years of college and go into college like as a junior. You know, your generals are done. So I just kind of really wanted, that's like a big deal. And so I just wanted to mention that. I mean, that's a pretty cool thing that St. Peter has an opportunity or will soon have an opportunity for. And I think that's pretty cool. So, and like I said, we could talk about some of this other stuff, but it's stuff we're going to do in the, I mean, personal finance course. We talked about that, but it's stuff we are, and everything else you already talked about. So it's just kind of hard, right? I mean, we're going to highlight things, but read the minutes. It's nothing big. We already talked about it all for, pretty much, so.
Great. Business Committee. Do you two have anything you'd like to say?
We're chugging along on the budget. Personally, I feel that we're well organized and I feel the board will be well informed as the budget preparation begins and so forth. So not to put any pressure on Dr. Olson, but I think hopefully things will go well. We were scheduled to have our quarterly, but we decided to postpone it a month, right?
Quarterly turbulence, Trinker?
Yeah. So that'll be unveiled next month and I think you'll appreciate it. So.
May I just, one thing?
Dr. Olson and Megan provided, excuse me, some, some financial, and it's an overused word, but inflation. Everybody hears about going back to two thousand and three up to now. The, we're approximately eighteen percent behind in terms of formula funding versus inflationary costs. Translating that is somewhere around thirteen hundred dollars per student per year. Multiplying that, it's somewhere around two point six million dollars. Don't hold me that number exactly, but that's what obviously have a huge, huge impact on our finances. So just a point of information, everybody views that inflation is getting under control, but you know, at one time it was a significant concern and we're still living with that.
Policy Committee? Do you have anything to add?
We've gone through some pretty hefty documents and we're, we're working our way through it. We've decided that it was a lot easier when we were just changing the numbers from the old system into the new, but we are making progress with good policies.
HR Committee?
I can't wait for negotiations to start.
I sense some sarcasm.
Oh.
We really have. We got that. So.
Sure. Okay. Yeah. Nope, that's good. Upcoming meetings of the board, we have Business, Education, and Policy Committee, all meeting in mid-November. And then our regular board meeting, Monday, November eighteenth, right back here in the Governor's Room at six-thirty PM.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor? Hi. Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.